Good afternoon, everyone, everyone present on video, those who may be actually watching the live stream, or those who may actually watch it in a recorded version after the fact. Welcome to the Special Health Committee of March 28, 2022. We are called to order. As we gather this afternoon, I wish to acknowledge on behalf of committee and our community that we're meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin. We thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continuing displays of friendship. We also thank all of the generations of people who have taken care of this land for millennia. Committee, you will note that the agenda has been slightly altered. There was an intent from the start. You will have noted in the body of the report that we will have a closed session. So that has been included. That was what prompted the the distribution of the revised agenda. There was one other item, too. I cannot recall specifically in the conference, the email conversation with Ms. Grunts. But in any event, you should have received the revised agenda. With that, I would invite Ms. Hill. Has the role been called, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, role has been taken.
Thank you so much. The next order of business is the disclosure of pecuniary interest. And if there are any, the general nature thereof, please. The chair recognizes none. Now, this identifies a closed meeting. So is it the intent, Mr. Moore, that we go into closed prior to the long term care report?
That's your it's your discretion, Chair. I think that it would be it would provide additional context. It can happen before or after Mr. Blackmore overview's the the policy that is proposed.
Okay, with that, then, I think that I would invite perhaps Mr. Blackmore to take us through the long term care report, as I had noted within the body of the the item. But with respect to the vaccine policy, you will note that the intent is to to convene in a closed session to discuss information received on a solicitor client basis. So with that, Mr. Blackmore, if you want to take us through the long term care report, please.
Thank you, Chair. If I could, please ask the committee to indulge me in going through a bit of a PowerPoint to just overview the policy before we get into the background. Wendy, if I could have control the screen.
You should have that option, Mike.
Okay. Bear with me one second.
That looks good so far, Mike.
Okay. I've got a screen over top of the screen here that I'm trying to get rid of. There we go. Okay, so thank you very much for indulging me the time to give this brief PowerPoint. Having some key points in supporting of the proceeding with the County of Redfield Long Term Care Homes COVID Vaccine Policy. I'd like to say thank you to Jennifer White, Director of Care at Mercy Lodge, for her work in gathering some of the current research and assisting to draft the policy. As you're likely aware, on March 14, the Minister's Directive terminated basically identifying that homes were no longer required to have a mandatory vaccine policy. Though this directive has been lifted, there is an expectation that each home will determine their own policy led by best practice in consideration of their local environment where COVID prevalence and risk are concerned. So the prevailing evidence lands in support of continuation of vaccine requirements that COVID vaccination, in particular, third and fourth doses are incredibly effective in high risk settings and reducing symptom severity, including death. There is also evidence to suggest that third and fourth dose prevents spread of new cases. And reiterating the previous slide, as supported by the COVID-19 Advisory Science Table, simply a complete vaccine series is the best defense against getting and spreading COVID-19. In support of this, the graph that you see in front of you, it's credited to the New England Journal of Journal of Medicine. It illustrates the a near twofold increase in in COVID-19 antibody levels for third versus second dose at both the one and six month intervals. So just demonstrating the power of that third dose with regard to antibody production. And retrospectively, the graph that you see in front of you now was provided in the March 17 COVID-19 Advisory Table update. And what demonstrates is the predicted effect of reducing both ICU and hospital admissions in Ontario as a result of the third vaccine uptake in Ontario. Essentially, what it's saying is that were not for the third dose, I in I would not for the third dose, ICU admissions were predicted to be 30% higher for ICU and 34% higher for hospitalization. In conducting the risk analysis for continuation of a vaccine policy, key factors are considered specific to the long term care environment. Specifically, what's, of course, the old older adults, immunite, immunite, pardon me, immunocompromised, unvaccinated, and marginalized individual groups are susceptible to severe illness from COVID-19. And of course, the risk of contracting COVID-19 is largely dependent on the number of close contacts, the vaccination status of the population, and the variant that's currently spreading. For which we know the BA2 is particularly variant. And growing in in terms of its prevalence as the the variant of concern. It's a consider a factor to consider is also is the vaccine effectiveness with the primary series. It wanes over time. And to keep in mind that where it was beneficial that long term care residents and staff were amongst the first to get their vaccines, were also, you know, that period of waning, it comes upon us that much quicker as well. And certainly, again, the evidence supports that protection with a third booster dose is not much stronger. Other factors considered locally and throughout the province. Provincial local indicators support that COVID cases, numbers, and hospital ICU cases have generally plateaued. And more recently, we're starting to see an increase. And I think this is large part, it's just large part due to relaxed public health measures. And although testing and reporting has been significantly curtailed, wastewater samples suggest a tenfold rate of infection over that which is captured and reported presently. Another graph to just give an indication of what might lie ahead in terms of. Yes. If loosening of restrictions and the impact it's going to have. So the graph you have in front of you is from McMaster University of Western Ontario. It predicts a near doubling at peak in hospitalizations where the BA2 becomes the dominant strain. And this is this is taken into consideration that half the population or contacts will not be masked as a prediction. And certainly, it seems that BA2 as well on its way to becoming the dominant strain. Another graph basically for further to loosening of restrictions, particularly that of masking predicts that ICU admission rates are more than double at peak where BA2 becomes a dominant strain and where half the population or contacts are maskless. So in consideration of the prevailing risk factors and congregate living setting that is long term care, we're proposing the following policy recommendation that that the precautionary principle supports mandatory vaccination of all county of rent for long term care employees, students, volunteers, support workers, and essential caregivers, and general visitors against COVID-19 in accordance with the highest level of protection medically recommended from long term care sector. Specifically, that mandatory vaccination requirements for all county of rent through long term care employees, students, volunteers, support workers, essential caregivers, and general visitors. That includes, one, all required doses of a COVID back COVID-19 vaccine to be fully vaccinated as COVID-19. Two, a booster doses of a COVID-19 vaccine authorized by Health Canada in accordance with the highest level protection medically recommended for the sector. And three, within 14 days passing after receiving that last vaccine. Further, that contract workers and children aged five to 11, that proof of vaccination, including a minimum of the primary two doses of COVID-19 vaccine, be approved approved by Health Canada within 14 days passing after the receiving the last vaccine. And that visitors of any kind who are not fully vaccinated be restricted to outdoor visits based on the ability of the home to reasonably accommodate such visits. As an exemption, general visitors or caregivers attending the home to visit or attend to a resident receiving palliative end of life care. Children or infants under the age of five, provided no vaccine has been approved for this demographic. And support workers who is attending the home for emergency or palliative situations or to provide timely medical care for the sole purpose of making a third. So County of Long Term Care, County of Redfield Long Term Care Homes, as guided by committee and council, have taken the lead with a number of infection and prevention control measures throughout the pandemic, including things like one employer, where we basically insisted just that the employee of County Redfield had to basically make a decision whether they're going to work as to prevent the spread from one facility to another. Changing of clothing upon entry into a home and leaving the home. Enhancing our screening and surveillance, which includes presently rapid testing daily, mandatory masking and eye protection before those became the standards. Staff coordinating before those that became a standard. So we see the continuation of vaccination requirement as a safeguard and staff safety is being promoted in that very same spirit. So in summary, in keeping with the consistent application of precautionary principle, County of Redfield Long Term Care Homes are seeking the support of Health Committee toward implementation of the proposed County of Redfield Long Term Care Homes COVID-19 vaccination policy to proactively protect those who are at greatest risk of both exposure and serious harm due to COVID-19 hard to severe outcomes being observed. And that's the end of my PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Blackmore. I don't know. I think before we proceed to any further items, I think while we are engaged on the discussion on vaccine policy, we will go into closed. However, prior to to convening in closed, are there any questions on the report on the policy that we have heard to this point? Counselor Doncaster, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify when we were talking about the or when Mr. Blackmore was talking about the the vaccine vaccination requirements and prescribed boosters. So does this or do we see this covering up currently booster, which is the third dose? And in some cases, the fourth dose, does this cover us if and when? Or over time, a fifth dose, a fifth booster or fifth dose is contemplated or mandated or suggested?
Chair Don, you're mute.
Mr. Blackmore, please. Yeah, thank you.
Your Chair to Counselor Doncaster. So the what was missing from the presentation essentially is is this is basically a continuation of the vaccine mandate that was already in place prior to March 14. And it's meant as a measure to get us through until over the next month or so, a couple of months, April 27, the remaining restrictions are removed. So with regard to do we down the road, do we see ourselves requiring a, if that's the question, a third dose or potentially a fourth or even a fifth? I think at this point, we're managing the the vaccine policy in the absence of a provincial policy on a monitor as we go basis. Certainly, when the lifting of the provincial mandate. It was not the best timing in consideration of where the the Omicron variant, where the BA2 is, and the plateauing and indeed even increasing of hospital and ICU admissions. Again, this is very, very much a precautionary approach to get us through until we can further analyze down the road what we need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Blackmore. I think to add to that, you will note that that it was made plain that April 27 is kind of a milestone date coming forward as well or going forward. Certainly, at that time, I'm sure there will be a comprehensive discussion as well. At this point, I think at the very least, a fifth dose is likely not on the table by the time we're going to be arriving at the 27th of April. I'm I think what is meant essentially in the the terminology now is boosted is the third shot. I don't know that that there is anything beyond the third shot. Fully vaccinated is deemed to be the two shots and boosted is deemed to be the third, just so that we have agreement on the the naming convention. Counsel, I'm not sure. Did I see your hand, Counselor Emo? When I call, okay, so I'm going to go there and then I'll come back to you, Counselor Murphy, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Through you, just a general question. I note in your your presentation talks about, and I'll just simplify it from my own understanding, regional flare ups of 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 infection. And so to that end, is the county leading the way and the other home, long term care homes in the county, are they going to are they going to be implementing something similar? Because I think where the confusion and frustration starts is if it's if it's one entity in a community as opposed to all of the entities or or most of them. I think we could survive some snaky sniping and complaining. You know, if it's a an area policy or standard practice, I think the trouble for most people is if it's inconsistent across a region. So that's why I'm curious about what's happening with the rest of the homes in the county.
Thank you, Counselor. Just before I hand that over to Mr. Blackmore, I think it some context is I know that we have crammed, it seems like about eight years into the past, too. But I know that we have not within the long term care community, or let's be specific, the County of Redfield Long Term Care Community. We have not at all times been lockstep of the province. Typically, we have been out in front throughout the pandemic. In this regard, we may be kind of making a rear guard action as opposed to being out in front. But I will note that in the supporting information for today's committee report, committee will have noted the correspondence received from Dr. Cushman and also that Advantage Ontario and keep in mind Advantage Ontario, I think is the umbrella, safe to say, Mr. Blackmore. Correct me if I'm wrong. Kind of captures, I believe, everything except the for profit sector. So certainly, the advantage position is consistent with what's being recommended here, as is our own local medical officer of health for Redfield County and District. So we certainly have the basis for that. But I don't disagree, Counselor Emo, that that an inconsistency has by times been a challenge to be able to communicate clearly with the public and to to instill within the public a sense of confidence. Anyway, with that, over to you, Mr. Blackmore, for anything further.
Through your chair to to Counselor Emo, just to just to add to that. So we've been in discussion with county homes as well, as well as Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus homes. And certainly, it was the intent of everyone that responded was to enact a vaccine policy of some sort, a bit of variation with regard to number of doses and to who, but definitely a policy for mandatory vaccine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Blackmore, have we kept sort of a log of any adverse reactions from our residents or our staff from the first dose or second dose? Just thinking, sort of jumping off what Glenn said. You know, if if I had a bad reaction in my second dose, am I going to be loath to have that third dose? And what do we do about those people? I'm just trying to look forward to somebody that says, you know what? I was in bed for five days after my second dose, and there is not a hope in hell I'm going to have a third.
Through your chair to Counselor Murphy. Yeah, we did have a, I think, a single individual that had had reactions such that it warranted not having to get further vaccination. But it was very rare of all the residents and all the staff, did we have one case? But that was basically as a medical exemption at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Blackmore. Anything, any further question or comment on this aspect of the discussion? Just one thing I wish to add, certainly, and Counselor Murphy, you kind of broached it there. There is such a balancing act that we are required as essentially the Board of Governors for the long term care homes within the county. This is is certainly a workplace, but it is the home of residents. And we know this across right across the population at large. We all seem to be occupying a different space right now. But we have have 186 residents in one home, and I believe it's 168 in the other home. So with all of those residents, it is incumbent upon us to certainly reassure that we are taking all steps for their safety, but also for the workplace. The other item that I wish to add, and it is a bit imprecise, and I'll preface these remarks by saying, as committee will certainly be acutely aware, with the rise of the Omicron variant in December, the the PCR testing regime was substantially constrained, very limited, restricted. I will note just yesterday, I think, in total, between the completed tests and outstanding tests, there was under 10,000. At its height, the Province of Ontario was completing something on the order of 70,000 tests a day. So it is substantially diminished with, I'm saying that because, of course, our our reporting now is certainly reflecting the fact that we have significantly limited the testing. So I just have open in front of me as of today's report, actually, from Redfield County and District. There's been a total of 3,719 reported positive cases, PCR positive cases of COVID-19. How that breaks down is 2,275 of those are since January 1 of this year. I'll repeat that, 2,275 of 3,700 are since the 1st of January. That's reported. I have also heard from different professionals suggesting that we're sometime somewhere perhaps on the order of three times to five times as many positive cases as are actually receiving the PCR test. All of this is to say that if we are in fact, if there are three positives for everyone that's tested, 82% of the positive PCR, positive COVID cases in Redfield County and District have come since the 1st of January. If it's five time, it's almost 90%. So everything that Mr. Blackmore has identified, everything that you have been hearing on the media, perhaps on social media, is absolutely correct that Omicron, in terms of its transmissibility, is in fact, its infectivity, that it is, there is no comparison to any prior version of this. However, we are very grateful that the virulence of the the this particular variant of the of the COVID virus is dramatically lower. But but essentially, it seems to me that we're in a situation where if you have not yet had COVID, probably over the next six weeks, you're going to get it. In any event, anything further before I ask for a resolution to go to closed session? Counselor Murphy.
That was a very bleak but very true statement. And further to, did everybody get the update from the RCDHU that there are 51 new cases just today? So.
That's over the weekend, actually. Keep in mind that they do not report on Saturday or Sunday. There are 51 cases since Friday.
Or correct, sir, and I forgot it was Monday, these special meetings just they they switch my days around, right, Paul?
Okay, thank you once more. Anything further before we go into closed session? Uh okay, thank you. Uh once more, anything further uh before we go into closed session? Uh hearing none, I'm gonna read the resolution. Um uh it was contained within the um the uh supplementary agenda that was just sent out. Uh earlier today, so I'll read it. Uh be it resolved, the committee move into a closed meeting pursuant to section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. As amended, for the purpose of receiving advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Kind of have a mover, please. Uh councillor Emo, seconded by councillor Rills, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you. Uh thank you, everyone. Uh welcome once again back to the open session of the Special Health Committee. Uh we're returning to where we uh had vacated. I'm gonna read the resolution for bylaw for item number one. That the Health Committee recommends to county council that policy G dash zero ten vaccination policy. For the long-term care homes be approved. And further, that a bylaw be passed to approve the vaccination policy for the long-term care homes, that is Bonnershire Manor and Miramichi Lodge. Kind of have a mover, please. Uh councillor Emo, seconded by councillor Bennett. Uh any further and final discussion? Uh all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Uh with that, we will move on. Bear with me one moment. Scrolling as quickly as possible. Uh I will yield the floor back to you, uh Mr. Blackmore, to take us through resolutions, please.
Thank you, Chair. Could you bear me one second here? My screen just disappeared on me. So um pardon me, Chair, where are we, where we're leaving off from, or what's?
We're we're at item number two, which is the the recommendation to endorse Advantage Ontario's position.
Okay.
And if you wish, I'll go ahead while you're seeking that, Mr. Blackmore, and I'll just read the resolution. Uh the recommendation is that the Health Committee recommends to county council that the County of Renfrew endorse Advantage Ontario's position. As it relates to mandatory vaccines. Uh could I have a mover, please? Councillor Rills, second. Uh Warden Robinson, thank you. With that, Mr. Blackmore, have you been able to locate the um? Item, it's page uh six. Right at the bottom of page five and page six of the PDF report.
Pardon me. Tender. Sorry, I haven't. Apologies, my screen shrunk on me. Um.
Not at all. Carry on with the background, please, Mr. Blackmore.
Yes, through your chair to committee. Uh so Advantage Ontario has endeavored to, uh it has long been um. A proponent for maintaining the vax, the vaccine mandate. And had expressed the considerable dissatisfaction with the province for leaving the homes to their own devices with regard to that policy. So as an interim measure, um or well, for for lack of a better um term, in the absence of a provincial mandate, Advantage has put forth. The idea of a coalition essentially, where homes could identify that they wish to pursue uh mandatory vaccines for their staff. Um basically to be part of the coalition, you would have to agree to have a mandatory policy for the two or three doses. Um that it be for staff, volunteers, and support workers. And that's uh our board, in our case, our committee and council is 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 comfortable with having our homes names, Bonnershire Manor, Miramichi Lodge, associated. And publicized as being a part of the coalition. Um so yeah, that's essentially, it's a, it's an an effort to show support in numbers, as it were, to the province and to any others uh. Who may be in in opposition to such uh mandate. That it's widely supported throughout the province in the not-for-profit sector.
Thank you, uh Mr. Blackmore. Uh discussion, any question or comment? Uh once again, just to repeat, and I know uh that someone had mentioned uh something akin to this earlier. Uh it's important to to note that the province has lifted the mandates. Um so what they said is the province is no longer enforcing, uh nor are there their fines associated with failure to to uh. Uh meet the mandates, uh nor is there a requirement for um for businesses to enforce these. Uh unfortunately, it seems to be what the public may have heard was, it's all over now, it's all behind us. Uh they are two distinct things, so once again, ad nause, uh perhaps ad nauseam. Uh it is important uh to recognize that throughout, certainly in in absolutely in the alpha wave. Uh but the hardest-hit sector right across probably the world uh has been the long-term care sector. Uh so it is, it is uh in my estimation, it is a simple choice to support this. Anything further, uh Mr. Blackmore?
Just sorry, Chair, just if I could further add it, what I need to collect to mention was when this announcement was put forth to families that. Essentially, we're holding the provincial vaccine standard until such time as we can create our policy. I have to say that. Uh the responses received from family were overwhelmingly in support. In fact, uh I'm sure there may be a detractor out there, but I've not heard.
Uh thank you. And and that is a a key salient piece of information. Uh that we have certainly the the families and loved ones of residents, um by and large, endorsing what what is going on here. Uh once again, anything further? Uh you've heard the resolution, committee, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Uh with that, we will move on to uh item three, which is an information item, Mr. Blackmore.
Thank you. Through thank you through to committee, it's this is a um information item request for tender Miramichi Lodge twenty twenty-two. Oh one humidifier retrofit H H U one. Essentially, this uh this is the replacement of our humidifier um by way of uh funds received through the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. Um whereby a bid was put forth for replacement of the humidifier. Um and it being a contract under a hundred thousand dollars. It fell within the purview of the Chief of Administrator of Officer to award such contract. And the lowest bidder um we received was from Safco at sixty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars. Um of the two bids, and I will add that uh of that one hundred and six thousand dollars that was awarded to the home. Uh approximately eleven thousand, I believe it's eight hundred dollars. Um went toward engineering consultees uh in preparation for the RFT.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Blackmore. As as certainly the report notes. Uh this does fall within the spending authority of the CAO. Uh the contract has been awarded. Uh however, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, continue to move on then to uh the uh item number four, and once again, returning to bylaws, Mr. Blackmore. Uh actually, maybe what I will do is I'll go ahead and read the resolution, get it moved, and I will yield uh for the background. Uh the recommendation being that the Health Committee recommend that council adopt a bylaw. To award request for tender BM dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one dash V three. Submitted by Francis HVAC for the Bonnershire Manor HVAC upgrades in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Three hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents, inclusive of HST. inclusive of HST. And further, that funding for this project be allocated from the COVID-19 resilience infrastructure stream of the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, that is ICIP. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Murphy, second, Counselor Emo. Once again, Mr. Blackmore, background.
Thank you, Chair, through to committee, so similar, it's the same funding agreement, sorry, funding body, the ICIP, for which the Bonnershire Manor was awarded funding of $90,000 for their HVAC program. As such, or GAO1 procurement of goods, an RFT was issued and advertised with a closing date of March 9th. The six tenders were received and the lowest tender meeting the requirements of the RFT was Francis HVAC at a bid of $938,366.88.
Thank you once again, Mr. Blackmore. Any further question or comment? All in favor? That is carried, thank you. Bear with me one moment, committee, as I return once again to my agenda. So we have completed item five and six. Kind of catching up with myself, I guess we've taken care of all of the business. Do we need, Mr. Moore, a resolution to approve the report as a whole? I presume we still do that, okay? I am seeking a mover then to accept the report as a whole. Counselor Doncaster, seconded by Counselor Bennett. Any further and final opportunity for question? All in favor? That is carried, thank you. With that, I will seek our next meeting will be, y'all know when the next meeting is, we talked about it in our last meeting. I will seek now motion to adjourn, please. Counselor Emo, seconded by Counselor Grills, all in favor? Thank you, we are all adjourned, thank you all.